Time is 5:30 PM. Located on the third floor conference room of the Bonner County Administration Building, 1500 Highway 2, Sandpoint, Idaho. We're streaming live via Zoom in YouTube. Is there anyone in attendance in need of special assistance to see here or participate? Advise the audience of the hearing procedure on screens. Additionally, everything that's happening is being recorded for future playback, so that's something to keep in mind. Staff, are there any changes to the agenda? Changes, right? I would move, let's look at approval of the meeting minutes from the April 20th meeting. If no corrections or changes.
You have to declare them approved.
Okay, I will declare them approved under the consent agenda. Right? File hearing procedure. Do the feds first?
Yeah.
Right now it's probably.
Fledge and then vote.
Okay. Now I'll have everybody ask to stand for the pledge allegiance. All right, again.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's start with roll call on my right.
Commissioner Whitley.
Commissioner Webster.
Commissioner Wymer.
All right, we have a quorum. All right, so moving on to file hearing procedure. That was all, sorry. Thank you, sir. Now we're on.
This one we're on here.
Yeah.
All right. The first file, so now I go into the first file, correct?
Absolutely.
All right, the first file we're going to be hearing is CUP 0017-22 and SS 0009-22, a planned unit development north of the Narrows. The applicants are requesting a large-scale residential planned unit development in recreational zone lots, parcels amounting to a total area of approximately 3.17 acres. The applicants are proposing to create seven residential lots with recreational open space, storage and utility areas. The project is located off Copper Bay Road on Public Road in Section 9 Township 61, Range 4, West Boise Meridian. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare?
I've known Steve Platt for probably, what, 30 years? But I don't think that's a conflict. I just know him, I can deliberate.
Right, you're not business partners on a specific.
No, not at all.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure. Or any other, we're not business partners.
We're not.
Okay, no.
Not any kind of partners.
Excellent. All right, staff may present the project.
Okay, good evening commissioners. This is Swati from Bonner County Planning. Let me share the screen and I will try to make this project, the presentation of this project less painful than the staff report. So I'll quickly go over some overview of the project. We have four parcels in here that we are deliberating on. There is a small portion of the Copper Bay Road. There is no attached parcel number to it, but it was, it was part of the road. So we have a total area of approximately 3.17 acres in recreation zoning. The file was duly noticed, the application was filed. The department deemed the application complete. And this map is what we are looking at. This area in yellow is the area that we are looking at for this planned unit development. So a little background on what planned unit developments are. Planned unit developments are basically, they are sort of an overlay on the current zoning, which allow you to create, to make, to request some changes to your current code as it sits. So you can request changes to your lot sizes, your impervious surfaces, your buffering requirements. That's just built into PUDs, planned unit developments. And in Bonner County, planned unit developments are allowed in all zones in Bonner County. Basically, what, what PUDs propose is a certain type of uses and the residential lots to be clustered, providing more open space on site. That's, that's the primary, one of the primary objectives of doing the planned unit development. So with that, keeping in mind, I will go forward and discuss some, some specifics of the case. I will rotate the plat. So this is the diagram that was submitted or the concept plan or the plat that was submitted with this project. The, all the area that you see that is highlighted with this black line, dark black line, is the area that has been, that is being proposed to be developed as a planned unit development. In general, tract A, B, C, and D are utility areas or storage areas. Tract E is the open area, common open space that is being proposed. And this lot 7 and lots 1 through 6 over here, I am not sure if you're able to see the cursor, but lots 1 through 6 here are the cluster lots.
I see 1 through 5, where is 6? Is it up by the water?
Yeah, no, this is, this is lot 6.
Okay, yep, yep.
This here is lot 6, lot 5, 4, 3, 2, and 1.
Okay.
And then this is lot 7. So these are being proposed to be developed as residential lots. Lots 1 through 6 will have townhomes on them. These are permitted conditionally in recreation areas. Single-family dwellings are permitted by right. All the storage and accessory uses are permitted by right in recreation zoning. So everything that is being requested in this PUD is either permitted by right or it's permitted by, or permitted conditionally. There is a requirement in PUDs that you have to provide a minimum of 10% of open space. With tract E being the common open space, this PUD is proposing a minimum open space of 31%. These are some details of the cluster lots.
So the road that goes through lot 5, or I'm sorry, no.
No, it's fine.
The road that goes through lot 5 is, it looks like it serves a lot to the, I guess, southeast of these, of this. What, how is that, how are those people going to access that lot? That road is going to disappear.
That, so let me.
Well, we can ask when the client talks, sorry.
Okay, no, that's okay. Yeah, let me.
It's like from the south.
Continue with the presentation. So in the staff report on page number 4, we have all the uses listed in, in a lot more detail. Seven residential lots, six of them are to be developed as townhomes. One is to be developed as a single-family residential. There is a common open space that is tract E, which is approximately 1.3 acres, 1.013 acres of the, of the total 3.17, which is approximately again 30% of the site. Utility areas, tract A, then tract B and C are storage and utility areas. And a part of the subject site will continue being used as private roads. That is the forest, the forestman road and the Hagman road. And then Hagman Beach Loop is proposed to be removed. And then there is a small portion of the Copper Bay Road right here. Right here, this portion of the Copper Bay Road, which is actually private right now, but the applicant is dedicating it to the public. So the entire road will now be public with the approval of this project. And the development is, has been proposed to be served by Granite Reader Water and Sewer District. We received a will serve letter from them. And it is being proposed to be served by a community water system. We also received a water availability report for this project with, as part of the application. So we have, we have generally discussed, we have generally discussed the site details. The access to the site is through Copper Bay Road, which is again a privately maintained county road. Some of the environmental factors are slight, site contains slopes of over 30% grade. It does not contain any wetlands, different types of soils. It is flood hazard, zones are D and AE. So if, if the applicant were to propose development in Zone D, they wouldn't, they would not require any further floodplain review. It's only when they, when they propose a development in AE zone is when they are required to submit a floodplain development permit. And at the time the staff report was prepared, we did not receive Idaho Department of Fish and Games comment, which we received yesterday around 3:17 PM. How, even though the Fish and Games comment doesn't say that it has any critical wildlife areas around the site, but I will go over that comment as we progress through the discussion of this project. So looking at the services, the site has all the services. A shared well system would be serving the residential lots in the development. Granite Reader Water and Sewer District, West Priest Lake Fire District, Northern Lights, Lake Pondre School District, and everything else is just what every, everyone has in the county. So these are the agencies which were routed for this, which were routed for comment on this file. We received comments from Idaho Department of Water Resources, Bonner County Road and Bridge Department, but at the time that the staff report was prepared, we hadn't received comments from Idaho Department of Environmental Quality and Idaho Department of Fish and Game. And I would bring those comments up now. So this is what Idaho Department of Fish and Game, sorry, Idaho Department of Environmental Quality says. DEQ has no environmental impact comments for the project listed above at this stage of the development. And then we have a comment from Fish and Game. This is the entire comment. The agency reviewed the application and they are concerned that the additional development up slope of Priest Lake may have the possibility of negatively affecting water quality. They anticipate that the stormwater management plan that has been submitted with the project would be adequate to mitigate those impacts. But they have concerns about the amount of impervious surface within 200 feet of the water included in the plan. They don't specifically say what those concerns are, but they also say that they're, those concerns would be adequately mitigated by the stormwater management plan that has been submitted. I will also go over the comments that we received from Bonner County Engineering Department after the review of the stormwater management plans and road plans, improvement plans that were submitted by the applicant, which were not, though we hadn't received those comments at the time of the staff report, so they are not included in here, but I will pull them up as well. And then Idaho Department of Fish and Game, they, they talk about the impervious surface and the request for that impervious surface from, being granted from 35% to the requested 41%. So they have a concern about that. And then there is some general information about how the project may negatively impact the fisheries within Priest Lake. So I will proceed with the project then. We did not receive any, any public comments on this. Bonner County Airport's manager replied with no comment. These are the standards against which the file was reviewed. So this is the purpose of planned unit developments as I explained before. The project requests flexibility in the configuration of the permitted development on site. That is stated in the purpose of the planned unit developments. This property is owned recreation and like, like I said before, planned unit developments allow flexibility, are permitted in all zoning districts of Bonner County. As per the Bonner County Revised Code, the applicant is requesting a large-scale residential planned unit development. It is defined large scale based on the number of residential lots that are being requested. So if, if they were requesting six lots or less, then it would be called a small-scale residential planned unit development. But since they are requesting seven lots, it's been called a large-scale residential development. So six is the factor over which it becomes large. Again, we have, we have talked about the uses that are being requested in this PUD. All the uses are either permitted by right or they are permitted conditionally. None of the uses that are being requested through this PUD are outright not permitted in the, in the recreation zoning. All the application criteria was met, pre-application criteria was met. The applicant is requesting a concurrent review of the planned unit development. That is the concept plan of this PUD as well as the plat itself. That will actually create the tracts and the lots that you see on the, on the plan that we just looked at. If there were any changes to be made in the future to the, to what you approved today, they would have to come back to a hearing and follow the same procedure for the, for the modification as, as we are, as we are doing today. So some design standards for planned unit developments. These, this is what the code requires. Common open space, they are providing 32% of common open space, which is way over than the minimum required 10%. They do have an owners association, covenants, articles of incorporation is something that will be recorded with the, with the final plat and that has been put as conditions of approval for this project. Development density, as per the zoning of the property, they could potentially have, if they were to not do a planned unit development and just do a normal subdivision, they would be allowed to create 11 residential lots on the property, but they are only requesting to create seven through this project. So they are bringing down the residential development that they could potentially have. And they are not requesting any residential density bonuses either. Design standards, so this is where the code says that this, this section of the code actually permits an increase or decrease in the minimum development standards set forth in the Bonner County Revised Code, Title 12, to accomplish the design objectives in the utilization of natural or created amenities, provided the development meets the intent of the standards. So the applicant has requested some deviations from the code through this project. They would be relating to either the lot size or the setbacks or the vegetative buffer. I think one of the responsibilities of the commission here is to evaluate whether those design objectives can be achieved by their deviations that the applicant is requesting and whether those, whether while granting those deviations is the intent of the code still being met. Does the commission have any questions about this particular?
I think my question would be, it's like looking at the 15,000 for the first townhouse and the three, the first subs. The basically how they're meeting that or what we're looking at is they have this buffer space in lot E or whatever it is that they're, they're looking at. It's like we're leaving this green space or this open space in lieu of building on the better quality area for people that want to live on a lake. That's, that's what I'm hearing you say.
Yes.
So it still meets the
Right.
the code in terms of what.
Yeah, does it, does it still meet the intent of the code? So for example, if they are requesting, requesting a deviation to their impervious surface, which they are, they are requesting a deviation to the impervious surface from 35% to about 7% of deviation. But with that deviation, they are also proposing a stormwater management and control plan. So does that meet the objective of the code? Even, even increasing that 7%, is it going to, is it, is it harming the lake in any way?
And they're not looking for a 25% bonus or anything through the PUD process?
Right.
Density?
Right. But we'll, we'll go over all, all the deviations that they are requesting right now. So the commission can make their decision after, after the presentation of the file. Minimum lot sizes, so like I said, they are requesting six townhouses and one residential, one single-family residential lot. The, the standards for townhouses is that you have to have 15,000 square feet for the first lot. And then every subsequent townhouse that you create that is attached to the first one should have additional 3,000 feet. So with this project, the applicant is requesting that the 15,000 lots be brought down to about 3,700, 3,400 or 3,900 square feet lots. And they are also requesting to bring down the area of lot 7, which is required to be 12,000 square feet, down to 10, about 10,000 square feet. But this is all keeping in mind that they are also proposing a common open space, which is more than, way more than that they are, minimum that they are required to provide. And they are also providing a lesser residential density than they are technically allowed permitted by right, which is 11 residential lots. Maximum lot coverage, they are requesting to increase it from 35% to 62.5%. Again, the lot sizes have been reduced considerably. So instead of having 35% on, on 12,000 square feet lots, they are requesting 62% on a 3,000 square feet lot. Street setbacks, the minimum, all the lots are being accessed internally through internal private roads. So they're requesting a street setback to be reduced from, sorry, yes, they are requesting a street setback to be reduced from 25 feet to 15 feet on all residential lots. And they are not requesting any deviations to the side setbacks because townhouses allow a common wall between two or more lots. Public road standards. The application, the applicant is requesting that they be allowed to waive off the public road standards for the Copper Bay Road to be developed to the public, to our current county standards. And I can pull up Bonner County Road and Bridges Assessment on that request, on that particular request. This is what Bonner County Road and Bridge says. Hagman Road provides primary access to the subdivision and is a county maintained road, which seems to be reasonably, reasonably suited for the existing neighborhood. The most recent traffic count on Hagman Road was conducted in 2011 and at that time only showed 66 cars per day in August. The road could reasonably accommodate several hundred cars per day and could accommodate the increase in traffic generated from these additional proposed lots at this time. The proposed dedication of a public right-of-way at the intersection of Hagman Road with Copper Bay Road is a welcome addition to the plat and will clarify the public status of the section of the road. While the county's current standard width for a public right-of-way is 60 feet, the existing right-of-way width for Copper Bay Road is only 30 feet beyond this dedication. And so the 30 feet width is consistent with the existing road and it is unrealistic to attempt to widen the right-of-way between the existing homes. Because of the oddly shaped property that we see here, there are, there are properties over here, down here, down south. And then there are these existing homes here. The right-of-way in between those is, is 30 feet. So it's reasonable, it's highly unreal, like highly ineffective to ask the applicant to widen the road of way for, for a short stretch and then just have another, again, a bottleneck of 30 feet. So that is what Bonner County Road and Bridge is saying here. The county maintenance ends at the intersection of Hagman Road and Copper Bay Road. Space for turning around plows, graders and other heavy equipment is limited in this area without utilizing the private roads and driveways. If the area shown on the preliminary plat is tract D and the adjacent portion of tract E were to be dedicated to the public as right-of-way as well, a more suitable turnaround for county maintenance equipment could be established, which could improve the services in the area. So the tract E, not tract E, but tract D is this small area here on the south end.
So they're asking for that to be dedicated as well, but it's not.
They are requesting it, but it's, it's really up to the applicant if they would be okay doing that. The county cannot require that they dedicate it to the public. So there was some confusion about the status of Hagman Road, that small portion of the Hagman Road previously. Sorry, not, not that small portion, not the Copper Bay Road, but the status of the Hagman Road and Bonner County went back and checked the status. It turned out to be private, so it's a private road for, for the record.
Is that, that dedicated small lot there next to the road, is that a flat? Is it equal to the level of the road?
I'm not entirely, I'm not entirely sure. I think they, I could look at the topography map. I can finish the presentation and look at the topography map after that, if that's okay. Or the applicant might be able to answer it better than me.
It looks all the same.
Lot width within 100 feet of the shoreline. So this section of the Bonner County Code requires that lots within recreation area have a minimum width of at least 100 feet for all portions that are within 100 feet of the, of the shoreline. So the applicant is requesting a variation from that, the lot widths are not 100 feet. And the reason for the request is as stated here. Bonner County Revised Code requires a width of new lots created within 100 feet of the water to be 100 feet in width. While lots 1 through 6 are set back from the water, they do fall within this requirement. Our design objective is to create smaller lots for smaller homes that are compatible with the existing neighborhood. This preserves the waterfront and adjoining hillside as common open space, rather than creating fewer lots with larger homes incompatible with the neighborhood. Larger homes would become visual impediments to the existing secondary homes and their valued, albeit filtered, views of pre-sleigh. The applicant is also requesting a deviation from the, to the lot coverage and impervious, to the impervious surface standards. As discussed before, they are requesting a deviation from thirty-five percent to forty-one percent because they are within seventy-five feet of the shoreline. They are about sixty-six feet from the shoreline, to be precise. Well, forty-four to fifty-one percent approximately. Then again, this is to keep in mind that they are also requesting smaller lots with a lot more open space for the project as a whole. Shoreline vegetative buffer, because of the odd-shaped property, or the existing beach that is already there, the applicant is not proposing to change that or to add any more impervious surface in the forty feet setback of the shoreline. Buffering and clustering requirements, the applicant is meeting these requirements and they are clustering lots one through six. They are unable to cluster lot seven simply because, again, the oddly shaped property. Environmental standards, shorelines, they are meeting the forty feet setback. They are only requesting an increase of the impervious surface from thirty-five percent to forty-one percent. The applicant submitted a grading stormwater management erosion control plan, which was reviewed by Bonner County Engineering Department. There are no wetlands on the property and... As of the date of the staff report was prepared, we did not receive Idaho Department of Fish and Games comment till then. But yet again, the comment doesn't indicate presence of any critical wildlife habitat, habitats in the vicinity of the project. Blood damage prevention standards, they don't apply as of now. Hill sides, if any land disturbing activities were proposed in steep slope areas in the future, they haven't proposed those yet, but if they were to be proposed in the future, they would be required to submit a geotech analysis to the engineering department, which will be reviewed and they would be required to put in adequate measures before the construction begins onsite. The planned unit developments are also required to follow, the plat of the planned unit development is required to follow the conservation subdivision standards that it has been reviewed against. So all the proposed principal and accessory uses that are permitted in the zoning district are permitted in recreation zoning. Development standards in chapter four of title twelve apply to all conservation subdivisions, which basically, chapter four is basically talks about the density and dimensional standards, which decides how many residential lots you can have on a property of certain acreage and certain zoning. Like I discussed before, this property can handle, based on its zoning and the size of the property, it can handle eleven residential lots. The applicant is only requesting seven through this project. Design standards. All proposed lots comply with the depth-to-width ratio requirements. There are no submerged lands on the property. All services or utilities have been planned for. Water supply through shared well, sewage disposal through granite reader water in sewer district. Fire protection, they would be required to add some conditions to the plat as per the code. Road and access, the applicant is not proposing any new roads in this project, but they are requesting that they not be required to widen the road for the public road standards or the private road standards because there are existing homes between the roads, which are not a part of this development and it would be just not feasible to widen the road and move the homes that are not a part of this project. So it's really not in control of the applicant. And as the applicant states here, the proposed PUD is interwoven with the framework of private roads created by platted subdivisions in nineteen sixty-three. I'm sure that back then the road standards, whether we had road standards or not, I'm not sure, but back then I'm sure they were very different from what they are now. So it would be impractical to apply today's standards to something that was created back in nineteen sixty-three. We have talked about minimum lot sizes. Cluster lots are not allowed to be subdivided again and that becomes a condition of approval on the plat. That becomes a note on the plat, which means they were, in the future, they would not be able to come back and say, I want to divide my three thousand square feet lot into another fifteen hundred and fifteen hundred square feet lot. Wells, sewage disposal facilities within common open space. The applicant is proposing that the utilities be located in common areas, which basically allows them to shrink their residential lots. That's a provision in the conservation subdivision of the planned unit development. Preservation of common open space, this common open space will be preserved in perpetuity of the project. And again, it's a, it's become a, you can see the open space management plan that is attached as appendix B of the staff report and it will also become a condition on the plat itself. In conservation subdivisions. Conservation subdivisions require that there be some buffering provided between the cluster lots that the applicant is proposing and the existing residential lots around the PUD. Again, because of the shape of the property, there isn't enough space to provide a hundred feet buffer or seventy-five feet buffer. So the applicant is requesting that they be allowed to create a five feet buffer between the cluster lots that are being proposed now and the existing lots. This project was also reviewed against the comprehensive plan, all goal objectives and policies. I will not go into the analysis of each of these. Transportation, recreation, special area sites, housing. So this proposed planned unit development and the short plat is consistent with the Bonner County Revised Code and the comprehensive plan that we reviewed it against. And this is neither a recommendation nor a decision from the planning staff. The final decision is rest for the governing body. You will be providing a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners and they will be making the final decision. And I will quickly go over some findings of facts. So all of these, I believe I have discussed all of these points, but I will just quickly go over what deviations are being requested. Minimum lot sizes. Maximum lot coverage, the lots have shrunken in size, so the lot coverage is being requested to be, so it's thirty-five percent on a twelve thousand square feet lot or sixty-five percent on a three thousand square feet lot? That's the choice the commission has. Street setbacks, twenty-five feet to fifteen feet, these are, the, these, the reduction in the street setback is not being requested from a public road, they are being requested from an internal private road. And they would likely match the other existing homes on the, in the neighborhood. A deviation from the public road standards, it's impractical to expect the applicant to widen the roads between other existing homes, which they have no ownership over. Lot width within the shoreline, again, the lots are quite small, they would be unable to maintain, if they were to be clustered in this development, they would be unable to maintain a hundred feet width. Impervious surface, they are requesting a deviation to that. They cannot push the lots further back, but they are also proposing a stormwater and erosion control plan, which is being reviewed by Bonner County against the environmental standards to make sure that it doesn't impact the lake negatively. Shoreline vegetative buffer, the applicant is not proposing to change the existing sand beach that already exists in the, on the waterfront. So they are not taking any vegetation away from what's existing. Buffering and clustering, the only deviation they are requesting is for lot seven, which is not clustered with the other six lots. And that basically, so everything, all the standards that you saw that the project is not currently meeting or is something that is not applicable right now, but something, an action that needs to be done at the time that the plat gets recorded, they have all been turned into conditions of approval so that we can make sure that by the time the project is done, all these standards are met. And I can take any questions at this time.
I'm assuming all the neighbors here were noticed?
They were.
Nobody wrote anything?
Not a single comment.
Crazy. People back behind there with... It's gonna be weird. Oh, they must have good neighbors.
I can pull up a map here if that would be more convenient to see what the neighborhood...
It's a high-density area, yeah.
Let me turn on the zoning. So it seems like this lot would still have an access from, from the county road? Answer your question, yeah. So none of the, none of the properties are being left without an access by taking away Hagman Beach Road?
I don't have any more questions.
You had a question?
Oh, the question about that...
Oh, the topography?
The road, yeah.
Okay.
I was curious if it was, what the topography was there.
I checked the topography a little.
Pretty, yeah.
My flat?
Yeah, that's basically flat over here.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, let's see, right here. This is what it looks like, but this area is flat. There's actually an access going right now. Access that part of the road. Yeah, but then again, if they were to propose any construction within thirty percent grade slopes, they would be required to submit a geotech analysis and again, it will go through the engineering review before any construction is permitted on the site. That's a condition of approval in there.
Thank you, Swari.
Oh.
Thanks, Swari.
Yeah.
This time we'll have the applicant make their presentation.
Swari, can we put up the preliminary plat?
Yeah.
Hello, my name is Steve Platte. I'm a Bonner County resident, living in Sagal, representing the Hagman Land Trust. And Ken Hagman is here with me, who is a managing trustee of that land. This project was submitted and approved, we worked on it twelve years ago, that was approved ten years ago, virtually the same. It was owned in different land ownership at the time, within a family land ownership, complications of trying to move it through family ownership to completion. Milton, the previous planning director, made a suggestion to Ken that maybe just let it work itself out and then just resubmit it and be fairly simple. The staff report of fifty pages tells you it's not necessarily been simple, but anyway, we're back again. It's really and truly the same project that we spent quite a lot of time on designing twelve years ago. And the basic elements of design, Ken owns and lives nearby. This property is family property. It was actually acquired by his father as a teenager prior to World War II. It's been in the family a long time. It had been a resort property, been lived on, had been subdivided, the resort, come and gone. But when we started this project twelve years ago, there were, where there are now six townhomes being proposed, six townhome lots, there were, at that time, there were a duplex, a family residence, and a duplex that had been converted to a, there were really were five residential units in the same area that we're now proposing six and then we've added lot number seven. But one of the things, you know, Ken lives there, grew up around there, had known the people that are on the lots in that area all his life, and we really went to, really looked at developing the property from a design standpoint of how do we make that compatible? And how do we not create a few larger lots that just become the typical trophy homes that we see along the lakes that would completely block and change the neighborhood and the secondary lots would just literally be fenced off from anything that had been there historically? So that's where we came up with smaller townhomes with some separation between them, allowing at least few corridors through there that would preserve that the corridors of what the landowners had known that had had those smaller lots. And the lots are smaller. Then, of course, you have to take reality into the back and people now have, as we look, as we drive around, all of the storage lots and properties that are scattered from here to corridor lane in every direction we drive in, people love their toys. So we had to give consideration to, okay, people are, this is a recreational area, people are gonna have their toys, are gonna want their toys, where do they put their toys? And where do they put visitors? If you're gonna have small lots, what happens when friends come up and they want to come visit? So we took those into consideration. That's where we came up with what became the storage, we'll actually build a common storage building, it will be separated where people can store their toys, we'll have trailer parking lots because boats will have trailers and they'll, you know, and then we'll have common parking areas so that if you have visitors, they can drop things off and then can actually go park their car and it's pretty short distance to walk back to anyone else's home without blocking the streets. We've asked for non-conformity to private road standards of the existing private roads simply because we're trying to conform and not conflict with the existing lots that are in there. And one of the things that the county engineer had mentioned was creating a one-way street grid that we would like to resist that idea. I mean, one of the things, creating rules that somebody has to enforce is just gonna, and part of it is we're trying to enforce rules on people that already have access across those roads right now. So we'd be coming in with a set of rules that you're trying to impose on people who've been some of those, people who own those property now for decades. And that's gonna be a pretty tough sell. And the other thing is somebody has to enforce rules. And one ambitious rule enforcer in a neighborhood, really and truly in a small neighborhood, ruins a neighborhood. So we would prefer to not to put those kind of rules... So we would prefer to not to put those kind of rules in the rules that we could put in, or, and, and that's in the HOA that we create for the six lots that are there, we can put rules in about parking, we can put rules in about not parking in the road. We can, we can do that through the HOA but not do it in a street design. Trying to impose, a street design on existing owners is, ooh, that is one thing I would not want to live next to, and Ken does live next to. So those, those are things that we would like to not have imposed on us. Fire protection, there's, you know, a number of options. In the well lot in track A, there's actually an underground storage tank already installed. Bear in mind, we started on these conditions of approval 10 years ago, and some of them have already been accomplished. One of the things in, in the well, there's also, we were working with, with the fire department and the fire board at the time, of, one of the things that's really tough when you get into a fire situation in neighborhoods like this, and bear in mind where they're at and the roads, and so you go in with a tanker, the thing that you quickly run out of is you run out of water. So having a large storage tank that can draft firefighting so that they can, a lot of times we'll run in a tanker supplying fire trucks, and so they're actually running, you can round out tankers, underground storage tank is something that's missing, and, and that was, that was a preference of the fire department at the time that we were doing this 10 years ago. Now, I, we can't say that is the case, we will do what we need to do to meet the fire conditions of the fire district that's up there at the time. And, and I think fire districts are pretty slack, we're trying to see what they can comply as much as fire districts here are done. So everything's in a bit of state of flux, but obviously, we will comply with what is required of the fire district, but we do have, have given it consideration, there is a fire storage tank in the area already buried that would provide, and will provide substantial water for fire protection.
How big is that tank, Steve?
10,000 gallons, well, so...
You have a lake there, too?
Yes.
They don't use the lake, though.
But sometimes, you know, you never can, you never can absolutely predict that you're gonna be able to get down any of those little roads.
Right.
And, and where, the road department had requested that the track D might be dedicated, even if the track D, and it's, it's workable, it's sloping, there's a transitional slope, the, the road that drops down into track E is actually also an easement to the condominium side, and those are existing cabins that go back. And so whether you really should give away, dedicate something like that to the public, that's already an easement, I don't know if it's worth getting into, even if that was dedicated to the public, I don't think we'd create the kind of turnaround that the road department's envisioning without getting up there, when you're really talking about is, is a snowplow raid with a blade on it, it takes quite a bit of space to turn around. What we had proposed some years ago was going up Copper Bay Road, and then where we're backed by track A by the wellhouse, is creating a hammerhead turnaround and dedicate that, and so the, the snowplow could just simply swing up Copper Bay Road without slowing down, you know, obviously slid out to make the corner, but then just back in, turn around and go, and it would be a quicker turnaround for a truck with a plow on it and, and the sander than it would be trying to wiggle around and turn around even with track D. What we're proposing that we will do is we will take that issue and meet with, having to know the road department from previous experience, and we will meet with the road director and the department, district foreman up there, and just review that situation. And if, I think that they will find that that hammerhead at track A would be a preferable option, and then we just dedicate that, so there's room there that's guaranteed that won't be blocked for. I think it would be quicker, and, and the thing you worry about is swinging big rigs around is the liability you have whenever you're trying to back and turn, that there's, it's always a hazard. As far as agreeing, you know, they'd asked for road signs, that stuff is very minor. We'll be glad to. The road in Hagman Loop, I think you asked a question about it, yes. Where it goes up and is shown is it accesses through lot five and, and, well, it does not touch lot six, but that will be vacated. We obviously are not gonna vacate it where it drops down to the common access point and access to the condominium site, so. But it will be vacated and that has to be done, you know, as a proceed toward final plat, and construction, that's gotta be vacated so that the lots available. And there is a marine, there's an existing marine construction business that operates off that beach, and, and it will be phased out as well. That's Ken's business, and it, it's a business that he's my age and old enough that he's thinking about retirement as well, and, and selling that business, part of the sale of it will be, the business will operate, but will be phased out and will leave that site. So as, once or six are built out and not seven, it will reach a point where it'll be incompatible with marine construction business and residential lots. Swari took most of the details. I think I have covered really what, what I wanted to say. Are there any questions?
Why would the county, I'm just curious, their, their interest in that little piece, but it seems that Hagman Road kinda switches around and there's even, looks like better turnaround spots possibly. Is that the end of where they plow to, or why did they wanna turn around at that location?
Yes, that's the end of, right now, that's the end of, Copper Bay, Copper Bay Road does not extend through to Peter Bay Road.
Yeah, it turns, okay, that's what the deal is.
There's a section of public road that's right there that ends.
So they would have to back up to that hammerhead and then pull in and then turn around, is that the thought?
Right, and, and it would really take, what they've done, they have swung around the corner, allowed the snow up, swung out, turned around and gone back. But it, it is with the liability that you, you have with operating big equipment, backing up, particularly in the snow, in the dark, in snow conditions, it's just liability as soon as you put it in reverse. So I, I really, I believe, I believe they would prefer that, the hammerhead that we had proposed before, that'd be up there by track A.
So the, uh, open space and then the shed for storage, so I'm just trying to figure out which tract is what, so what is B and what is C on that map?
The utility and storage tracks.
The C, track C is the recreational open space, so that will be an area where, oh, let's say they wanna have a neighborhood cornhole tournament, or they wanna play bocce ball, or they wanna, you wanna have, um, an area for kids and some picnic tables where people can actually sit and, and gather a bit, that'll be the open space that, that is track C, that's what that is for. The parking and the storage is all within track B.
Okay, and both of those are counted as open space?
Yes.
Track A as well, I would assume is open space.
I, I, it's included in the open space, but I think in, in recreational open space, I think utility areas actually are counted, but I'm not...
Well, the code does say that you can have your utilities in the common open space. So yes, track A and track C and track E could all be counted as open space, but even with just track E, they are at 32%.
Okay, yeah, so I'm seeing the 1A there, okay.
Yeah.
And so lot seven is gonna be, is that another, is that townhome or is that a single home? So that's what the adjustment from the, I think it was 12,000 feet down to 10,000 or something?
And track B is not open space 'cause it's the storage shed?
Right.
Do, any commissioners have any more questions? From the staff or from the president?
Yeah, I guess the main thing I'm looking at is the fishing game and then the impervious surfaces. I don't know a whole lot about stormwater management. I guess what's driving that is just the, uh, high lot coverage in the six lots there, or how do you think about that? That seems to be the biggest concern I, I would have looking at this.
If you look at the eastern slopes of lots one through six, those are turning down, there, there, you can see the topo marks that are on that that are showing, that's a steeper slope that falls down to an, a level beach at the, at the lake. And we actually thought we had better control and could control the environment, the vegetation and effectiveness of stormwater management if that was public area, with common ground, rather than having it individually controlled and beyond. So that's why we turned that in, reduced the size of the lots, kept it as open space, we can vegetate that and use it for stormwater control and natural habitat. And I think that that, that offsets, obviously, you know, with the impervious surface of the lots and the, and the homes, we're gonna have to manage the lots, and we, we've actually figured that we can do that within the lots, so you can have stormwater collection sites at the corners of those homes and collect the water without it running downhill, and then you have the ability to control it on that hillside with vegetation.
Okay, and that kinda ties into the high lot coverage ratio is the, the lots are small and they're, have a high coverage, but they're right next to the open space, so you could've made the lots bigger, but then you have...
Everybody...
A snafu of everyone wanting to jump down the hill to get to the lake instead of a shared.
Yes, but you just only have, you don't have control of it. And if, if it's private, then people can do what they will do, and, and I think we've noticed that on, on any number of steeper slopes that are around the lake where there's traffic on them, they tend to erode more just through use, so.
And how's the access, going, that road that's switching back down, that road goes away, so how, how do people get down the slope?
Are we talking about the Hagman Loop Road, is that, so you're talking about where...
Yeah, the loop that comes out to the east.
Yeah, this, this road goes away, and then what, there's trails down?
Well, there's, there's a road, um, the part that goes away...
It's like there's still common area in between those, is that correct?
If you'd like to step forward and show this. I know I'm getting wider as I go over, I don't like that stuff. So it goes, the road goes away right here, this is the road that comes up, drops down the hill, so, and then this will provide room for parking, for turnaround, for vehicles. And the other thing that, there'll be just some control points where, because this is just local access, you can go down there and unload and then go park again back at your place because you're right there.
So the whole road's not going away, just that northern section of it?
Yes.
Okay.
And if you were here and you wanted to go swimming, you would go out on this road, walk around and then walk down, or how?
Yes.
What's that gap between like lot two and let's say lot three?
Vegetative buffer, isn't it?
That's not a trail, or what is that?
And the reason that it's not a trail, if you look at, these, these are steep slopes, and to think that you can just dump a trail straight down is, is not realistic.
Okay, so you use the...
What we really left them in there really and truly is view corridors for the secondary lots and the people behind them.
Okay.
So it seems like it's at least 24, 25 feet between the lots, the, that small strip of common open space.
Swari, do you know this impervious area, does that include the open space? Cause it seems like we got a fair amount of open space there that's not, you know, asphalt or whatever, or roof.
The common open, the common open space...
They're just looking at the 3,000 feet for each building.
So the impervious space that they're looking at for like lot one is limited to just lot one, they're not taking into the fact that there's space in front that's...
No, so the impervious, impervious surface is the calculation of any paved area that is within 200 feet of the shoreline. So they're requesting that to be increased from 35% to 41, 45%, whatever is stated in the staff report. And that, that includes only the, only lots one through six.
Does it include track D?
Uh, I'm not entirely sure.
But within, even within track D, when you have a road service, a road service is perched in impervious surface. So, you know, offset some of that, and, and that's what we had to show, so. But the thing that you do is with all of that, you create, and you control with your gradation and your stormwater plan of where the water's gonna go, so that it's not running off, and you create a control, so that it, it's a very sandy soil, and so creating a place for the water to go, then the water will evaporate and, and, and be filtered before it hits the lake. And, I mean, it's really gonna be very little different than it is, has been up there right now, and, and all the fishing game, and, and some of these are just standard objections that they list, but at the end of the summer, I've been up there and seen fish swimming in the water, and the water is clear, and it's obviously, the people being there and using the site have not determined, have not scared the fish away from their, their water.
Right.
So, Steve, would you like me to pull up the, the impervious surface calculations sheet?
Right, if they're, if they're, are interested, but...
Let me see if I can. I think that will clarify the question much better. Sorry, my computer is a little...
Yes, I think the question is, is it all 200 feet of everything, or are they looking at just like one, two? I thought they were only asking for conditions on lots one through six.
Yeah, cause if the lots are covered, it makes sense, that would be...
Cause the 200 feet calculation from the water's edge and...
And all lots affected are calculated through there, then?
Yeah. But then it's also, it's not just, we can't say that the roads are...
I know.
Maintained road is, is an impervious surface in almost all calculations.
Right.
Yes, that's...
Yeah, so includes all the, all the area and the track D as well.
It looks like includes the neighbors, I guess, and the general, I think, yeah.
Yeah, it includes everything. Yeah, including the road and, huh, that's interesting.
It's weird that they would include the neighbors.
Yeah, I don't know.
You know, like what if it was just open space, man, there?
Yeah, you can't control that, obviously.
Refer that to the planning commissioner, you gonna tell him to fix that? There's gotta be a reason, here we are.
All right, any more questions?
No, I think that's it for me.
All right, I have no more questions for the applicant. We will move towards, uh, public testimony. Public testimony is gonna be limited to three minutes per person. You may give your three minutes to another person, so somebody may have the total of six minutes. No one is allowed more than six minutes. I don't have a roster, but I'm not sure if we have anybody in the audience that is pro... Here we go. Or con. So we have Ken and Steve here, and we've heard from them, so we'll, uh, see if there's anybody else in the audience or online that would like to add public comment. Hand up. All right. Online, you're free to talk, you have three minutes. When I look at unmuting your, your microphone there, then you should be able to hear us, or we can hear you.
Can you hear me now? Yes.
Hello.
Hi, this is Greg Van, I'm Ken's neighbor, hi Ken. I just, I, I live in one of the condominiums right down below on Hagman Beach Loop Road, and I, my question is just, so we're gonna abandon the north end of the loop according to the plan, and then it sounds like our access, of course, will be, we have an easement in there, and then the main maintenance of that road will be by the HOA or, or within the rules of the PUD, is that correct?
I'm getting a yes from Ken and Steve.
Great, that's all I got a question on.
Thank you, sir.
All right, any other questions or comments from the public? All right, that looks like it. So, uh, let's see, now we can have a chance to go back to the applicant if we'd like to, if they would like to rebuttal or just clarify that real quick for the record?
Steve Plaid for the record once again, and yes, so there will, there will be the HOA form is, is required, and within that HOA, then it will be the Road Association. The Road Association will have the responsibility of maintaining the road's summer ant litter for these.
And that would be the Hagman Beach Loop, the south half that's gonna remain, you'll be responsible for that?
Responsible for that maintenance.
Okay. Thank you. All right, now that there, since there's no other questions for... All right, now that there, since there's no other questions for, I don't have any yet. Close or?
If you close the public, you close the
Testimony.
Close the public testimony.
All right, we're, this time we're going to close public testimony and the commissioners will deliberate.
He was appointed his vice chair last month, so.
Don't know what I'm doing yet. Exactly. All right, guys.
You're doing a good job.
So any questions or comments? What do you guys thought?
A lot of pluses or minuses, it is a 55-page report. It seems like it all averages out for the most part. They obviously spent a lot of time here. There's no, no negative comments. There's a lot of neighbors that would have been
Yeah, I'm surprised somebody, no complaints.
Yeah, we've had more exciting hearings than this. I guess leads me to believe that they thought through it. He's, lives nearby. So I think they want to do it right.
I looked at a lot of the different houses nearby and it was like, but if you are within that five foot, you know, six foot setback on the road, you know.
That's an old plaque, you know?
Yes.
It's the way it was. You can't change it.
I do like the trailer storage and shed storage because I can imagine, you know, you have a town home and then suddenly everyone's dragging their five side by sides and two jet skis up there in a tight area. Not a problem, so. Yeah, I think the only thing for me that I don't, that I guess just comes up is the impervious surface thing.
Sure.
But it's very close to, you know, whatever the guideline is. And I think it can be up to 52% if it's, if everything's 75 feet away.
Right.
And it's 66 feet away. So I mean, it's pretty close to a lot.
It's probably six percent as opposed, you know, to that much.
Yeah, so it's pretty
The stormwater management plans, you know, are going to address that anyway, so. I think that's So, you know, as far as, it's the first time we've had a file that looks like there's two things we have to approve.
Yeah. Couple of different motions.
Yeah, two different motions, so.
So I guess looking at that, we have a motion on the PUD and then on the, is it the short plan is the next one?
Yes.
Yeah, the short plan would be the
Do you guys have, do you guys have any comments on the deviations requested? There is a long list. I want to make sure that you understand them all and that you're okay with staff's analysis on it and that more or less you've analyzed and feel that they're adequate for the project or?
Yeah, looking at all the deviations, I felt comfortable with the fact that they're asking for a ton, like all these little areas, but they're giving a lot on the other side.
Yeah, it all made sense to me. I mean, you know, just looking at the chart, it seems like, wow, they're asking for all this deviation, but it, you know, I studied it and it looks like it all made sense.
One of the things that I, you know, looking at all the people that were noticed, no comment, you know, and I've seen this area, you know, these like area usually gets a lot of feedback, you know, a lot of stuff, so. It doesn't seem like it's going to be unreceptive.
Yeah, I'm surprised there wasn't even any letters or anything.
Anytime I see a long list like that, I want to make sure that you guys are aware of it.
Everything
If you have any questions for staff, we're here to answer them. The applicant can answer any additional if you want. But every now and again, we get a, you guys granted X number of deviations or variances essentially with the PUD. So make sure you guys are aware. It does seem reasonable. That's what staff conclusion we came to as well. So they could have a much higher density than what they're asking for, as Spotty stated, so.
The one question I was going to have
Lots here instead of six.
Was kind of answered by the gentleman that called in, which looks like it was this guy has a Looks like the McIntyre Trust, which is just to the south of them. You know, I was wondering, you know, we're getting rid of a road here, like there's people that probably like using that, you know, and it seems like they're fine coming through the south side. That would be the biggest concern I would have. And it seems weird that you can vacate a public or a private road like that or you can just, that, that part seems kind of weird, weird to me. But how is that handled typically?
So are there any comments on that?
Private road, private roads can simply be vacated by replating. That's all it takes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the people that are affected on the other end of that private road, they would
If they are not the owners of the private road, then they don't have a say.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's why only half of that road's being done?
Yeah. So if the applicant owns the private road, then none of the neighbors have a say. I can have a private road on my property and then you worry with it the next day.
So there's no dedicated easements that were found off that?
They don't have, they may have been using it, but they don't have easement.
I'm not clear on that.
Seems like the guy on the phone, he's happy he's my one. But he's happy with what you
Do you want to open it back up for rebuttal or?
I'll, this time we'll open it back up to, for rebuttal from the applicant or the applicant's representative.
Steve Clad for clarification one more time. And what, what there is, there's an easement from Hagman Road and Copper Bay Road, that little section, track D that we were talking about, where it drops down to the condominium path. That, that is where their access is to the condominiums and they have an easement to the beach, so that can't go away. And that would also be then the easement in the road that will stay in place, but will also be the road access for the dog and the public, the access for the lot owners within the landing at the narrow. So that will stay in fact.
I got you.
So half the road stays in place and part of it gets vacated.
Okay. Steve, is it the recreational easement that shows on the plaque in track D? Okay, that's, that's what it is.
And then it was really county mapping that picked up the Hagman Loop that was never really created as a road. It just showed up in the county maps.
Okay. Yeah, because it's labeled on there and everything. That was the only real question that stuck out, and that's why I interrupted Spotty.
No, I'm
I'm like, this seemed weird.
Yeah, I'm glad you did.
Yeah, the last thing I would say is, you know, in the ask of all the different things they're asking for, the square footage variance for the town home seems like a lot. You're supposed to have 18,000 square feet for two. They're having like 7,500, so that seems like a lot. But when you look at the open space right there.
Yeah, and how they cut it out.
That's not really apples to apples. Same thing with the lot coverage, which also looks like they're asking for a lot. When you look at it, they're, they're really not, so. Anyways, it all looks square to me.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I would if I knew how.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Page 34.
I'll make a motion on the PUD. I move to recommend the Bonner, the Board of County Commissioners approval of the project filed CUP 0017-22, requesting a large-scale residential planned unit development on approximately 3.17 acre recreation, recreation zone property located off Copper Bay Road in Section 9, Township 61 North, Range 4 West, Boise Meridian. Finding that is in accord with the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and the Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law. Then there's a parenthesis, says commissioners to insert the conclusions of law here that the project meets.
That would be a conclusion of law written on the
Yeah, that's, that's below on the staff report. The decision is based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the findings of, or up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. Further move to adopt the findings of fact as set forth in the staff report or as amended during this hearing. Direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion. Have the chairman sign and transmit to all interested parties. The action could, that could be taken to obtain the condition use permit is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. This action does not result in the taking of private property.
Do you have to read each of the conclusions of law?
I do have to read them all?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
You say whether the conclusion needs the government
Okay. So based upon the findings of fact, the following conclusions of law are adopted. Number one, the planned unit development is slash is not, well, I'm saying it is, am I saying it is in accordance?
Yes, yes.
In accord with the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. Proposed planned unit development for the first, or the first phase of it can be substantially completed within two years from the date of approval. Number three, each individual development can, phase can exist as an independent unit meeting the minimum standards set forth in this chapter. Number four, the streets and thoroughfares proposed are suitable and adequate to gather anticipated traffic and will not generate traffic in amounts that will overload the street network outside the planned unit development. Connections to the public transportation systems that will also be considered. Number five, any residential development will not constitute a residential environment of sustained desirability and stability and will be in harmony with the character of the surrounding neighborhood and community.
Commissioner, can I, sorry to interrupt you, but, but did you read any residential development will not constitute or will constitute?
It said will not.
Oh, that was, that was my error. I will redo number five.
Okay.
Any residential development will constitute a residential environment of sustained desirability and stability and will be in harmony with the character of the surrounding neighborhood and community. Number six, any proposed commercial or industrial development will not, will constitute an efficient, well-organized development with adequate provisions for access and storage and it will, will not adversely affect adjacent or surrounding development. Number seven, the proposed use will not create a hazard
Will.
Will not create a hazard and will not be dangerous to persons on the adjacent, on or adjacent to the property.
We will switch that next time.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
All right, we can vote, starting from my right.
Mr. Wakeley, aye.
Commissioner Webster, aye.
Commissioner Wymer, aye.
Vote carries?
Yes. Onto the plaque?
Plaque. That was a lot. Then you got to look at the will and will nots.
All right. All right, now we're looking at the, a motion, looking for a motion on the governing body of the plaque. Can the chair make a motion?
You have to step down.
Okay, I can't think, oh yeah, I didn't think so. I was
No. Chair can make a motion.
I can read it. Yeah, your bylaws don't state otherwise.
Yeah.
You're Or Jake can.
There you go, Jake.
Jake can do it. All right, before I start reading, I'm reading this all. There, and then I'm reading the bullet points.
Or no, you don't have to read any of the conclusions on this one.
But you're going to have to insert the
Inclusions of law for plaque, I think I have to.
Yeah, that's what I did.
I thought you had to read the conditions.
No, it was the conclusions of law.
You could just read the, the motion and where it says insert motions, insert conclusions, that is where you read the conclusions.
And then you can pop back.
All right, here we go. Christian Wymer, I make a motion to recommend approval. I move to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners approval of the preliminary subdivision plaque, file SS 0009-22, requesting to subdivide an approximately 3.17 acre recreation zone property located off Copper Bay Road in Section 9, Township 61 North, Range 4 West, Boise Meridian into seven residential lots and five utility or storage tracts, finding that it is in accord with the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law. Based upon the findings of fact, the following conclusions of law are adopted. The proposed subdivision is in accord with the purposes of this title and of the zoning district in which it is located. Site is physically suitable for the proposed development. The design of the proposed subdivision will not adversely impact Bonner County's natural resources as identified in the Comprehensive Plan. Any adverse impacts or potential for impact shall be mitigated as a condition of approval. The public and private services, including but not limited to water, sewer services, solid waste, fire protection, emergency services and school facilities and transportation, which will serve the proposed subdivision, are adequate for the needs of future residents or users. The proposed subdivision will not cause circumstances to exist that will cause future residents or the public at large to be exposed to hazards to health or safety. The design of the proposed subdivision or related improvements will provide for coordinated access with the county system of roads and with adjacent properties and will not impede the use of public easements for access to or through the proposed subdivision. The proposed transportation system is designed to adequately and safely serve the future residents or users without adversely impacting the existing transportation system by reducing the quality or level of service or creating hazards or congestion. The proposed subdivision is designed to comply with the design criteria for subdivision set forth in chapter 6.2 of this chapter. Sorry, subchapter 6.2 of this chapter. The proposed subdivision is in accord with the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. The decision is based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of fact as set forth in the staff report or as amended during this hearing. And direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion, have the chairman sign and transmit to all interested parties. The action that could be taken to obtain the subdivision is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. This action does not result in a taking of private property.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Wakeley seconds the motion.
Right, the motion passes, or the motion's seconded, we'll vote from my right.
Mr. Wakeley, aye.
Commissioner Webster, aye.
Commissioner Wymer, aye.
All right, the motion passes. All right, we'll move to the next case. It's going to be, I think, an extension.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, let's see here. All right, the next file is going to be CUP 006, or 0006-21, a conditional use permit extension request for the approved permit for duplex construction. Joseph and Ashley Schulteis and Kevin and Jennifer Schneider. The applicant requests a conditional use permit for a duplex on a half or 0.46 acre parcel in the property zoned in Alpine Village. The project is located off Telemark Road in Section 20, Township 58 North, Range 2 West, Boise Meridian. Request was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their public hearing held on May 6, 2021. And the permit was subsequently issued on June 23, 2021. The permit is now due to expire on June 22, 2023. Any commencement of the use within two years of the permitting issuance. Applicant is therefore requesting a two-year extension to the approved conditional use permit. Spotty, will you be presenting this file or is this a file?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it's pretty much what you just read, to be honest. So the project is a, like you said, the project is a duplex that was permitted back in 2021. It's, one of the conditions of approval in the issuance of the CUP says that it has to be renewed in, in two years after the issuance if the use hasn't commenced within two years of the issuance. So this is where you're making a decision on whether the project should be approved or not. The Bonner County Revised Code hasn't changed regarding duplexes in Alpine villages since 2021. There are, yeah, there are no, no outstanding problems with the project as such that was permitted. You could, you can make a decision if you like. Oh, I don't have a motion for you.
All right. This one, I don't know if we conducted the exact same. Jake, I haven't done like
What's the code say on the rules? Or
Do we go through? Run it the same way?
The issuance states that it has to be considered in a public hearing. So you have to treat it as a public
Okay.
So you open up for public comments.
Okay.
Close for public comment, deliberate, make a decision.
All right.
All right, staff has presented the project. The applicant is, if they're here, they can make their presentation if they would like. They don't have to. All right, now we are going to open it up for testimony, public testimony. The rules for public testimony is you have three minutes per person. Please state your name for the record. You may give your three minutes to another person, so you, they have a maximum of You may give your three minutes to another person, so you, they have a maximum of six minutes to speak. Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to make a comment?
I am.
Okay, so we will close public comment and, uh, the plan, or the commissioners will deliberate. Pretty kind of, there's no changes.
Um, there was one written public.
I saw that comment, yeah.
I'm curious about that, I'm curious about that because, you know, we had a, you know, we're not really discussing the file, just whether it's.
It seems like the, the comment was geared more towards, um, the project than opposed to an extension.
Right, yeah, it was.
Um, it's my understanding that we're just looking at the extension, whether we can extend it two years, so I think we just kinda.
Okay.
I, I guess, can we ask, if the applicant's present, can we ask why it got delayed to begin with? Is that clear, Dan, or?
Uh, we'll open it back up to public comment and ask a few questions of the applicant.
Uh, Joe Schulteis here, we just wanna make sure we weren't treating this just as formality. Yeah, we just had some delays in structural engineering designs along the way and it, we got to the point where we felt like we'd met all the criteria of the conditional, conditional use permit and we're ready to, we were ready to file a, a building permit, but we have a lot of things that we need to get figured out. And so we just felt like if anything wasn't perfect, then we were gonna need the extra time to be able to, to make sure that our ducks were in a row.
Sure. Since I know there's a short period, window of construction up there.
Yeah.
So.
Are you planning on building this summer or next summer?
Uh, we, we don't have all the finalization of our, of our project or anything like that, um, but structural engineering took a long time. We had stormwater management plans, uh, geotech engineering that we were working on for the last couple of years. So we don't know timelines or anything like that.
Sure.
Uh, but we do know that we were coming up against that, that point where we had to file for a building permit and if any of the criteria was not met perfectly, then we were gonna run out of time with our conditional use.
I'll ask.
Just to start over, I guess.
Right, exactly. So we were just trying to.
So I kinda jumped around or we, we went past a few things, I just like asked real quick if any commissioners have any conflicts to address or to, to disclose currently.
No conflicts.
Okay, sorry, Joe. Anything else you'd like to add? All good?
No, I just wanted to make sure you're here to answer any questions that the.
Thank you. All right, we'll close public comment again and deliberate.
I don't think there's anything to deliberate.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. I know what a flight building is, Switzer.
Yeah, yeah, it's a limited time. Yeah. It almost should be a, a little bit longer.
Turn around and then two years on fresh white, especially up there, you know.
If you have a lot of conditions as well.
All right, um, does anybody have a motion?
I guess it's my turn again. Commissioner Wakeley, um, I move to approve this project CUP zero 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 six dash twenty-one, a conditional use permit, I'm gonna make it a little larger, to construct a multifamily duplex off Telemark Road and Alpine Village Zone in the Switzer community, finding that is in accord, in accord with the general and specific objectives of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared, testimony received at this hearing. Further move to adopt the finding, following findings of fact and conclusions of law as written or as amended. The action that could be taken to obtain the conditional use permit is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. This action does not result in the taking of private property.
Do I have a second?
Second that motion.
All right, uh, we will vote from my right.
Mr. Wakeley?
Aye.
Commissioner Webster?
Aye.
Commissioner Wymer?
Aye.
All right, the, um, conditional use permit extension passes. Right. Um, all right, that's the end for our cases tonight. Um, I guess we'll have staff present.
We'll have a meeting next month, so.
We do have a meeting?
Yes, we do. Three months in a row, we're wrong. So just kind of a heads up, hopefully we get all five of you guys.
June fifteenth?
June fifteenth, so mark your calendars. If you have any, uh, specific food requests, let me know. You guys don't get paid much, so.
Did you wanna talk about having the three of us decide on the change of menu and time?
So one, and we, we should probably wait till June to bring this up of, um, time of day of when to hold your guys' meetings.
Thanks, guys.
So the planning commission meets at four thirty, um, you guys meet at five thirty. If you're interested in the idea of meeting earlier in the day at four thirty or five, that's fine with us. Um, that's a decision that doesn't have to be made by anybody other than the zoning commission, so. I think it'd be probably rather than you guys make the decision.
It's just on three.
To get all five, you know, all five of you guys to, to take that up and make the decision, so.
Okay.
Okay, I will be out of town for the June one, but I made this one, so we had a quorum.
Yeah, exactly, and we appreciate that, so. These renewals, you don't see all that often on CUPs. Usually they get them done or they make some kind of progress within the timeline. I think this is kind of a special case. Uh, next month, uh, look, look at the packets. If you guys have any questions, we'll also have another audit file for next month, so take a look at it and let, let us know. Feel free to contact staff if you have any questions on it, so. No changes of staff, we lost Tyson, if he has, Tyson Lewis, so.
He was new, right?
No, he's been a couple of years.
Okay, how often?
He's new to hearing files.
Yeah, he was newer to hearing files. He's been doing hearing files for about a year, um, but, yeah. So that's a loss. Um, we haven't, we haven't replaced him, I haven't started recruiting, I'm not sure if I will immediately, we're kinda seeing how it happens, but, um, let's see. No other staff changes. The, the planning commission took up a, a staff-initiated text amendment this last Tuesday, so a couple of nights ago. We deliberated five hours and they continued the meeting to next month, so we'll see what happens. Some of those changes might affect your guys, I'm trying to think of, there's ten minor changes throughout that, so feel free to take a look at it, it's AM five on our, on the website, so I don't think anything's gonna be drastic. There's one change that took a couple of hours, it's a change in the vacation rental permit occupancy standard, so that's a, it won't, it won't affect you guys at all, you won't see those kind of files, but, um, that's a big, quite a controversy field.
Isn't Idaho kinda weird about vacation ren, about limiting vacation rentals, like as opposed to where there's state law that overrides or supersedes, like city and county law?
Kind of. So if you look at sixty-seven, sixty-five, thirty-nine, I almost have it memorized at this point, I could probably, but more or less it says that cities and counties can't enact an ordinance that strictly prohibits vacation rentals, um, but you can enact ordinances that limit, um, no, I almost have it. That you can establish limitations.
You can establish rules, but you can't kill them.
But you can't, you can't strictly prohibit, so.
Like when Sandpoint prohibited South Side at first, but you could, you could have vacation rental over here on the north.
So it's a, I, I haven't heard of too many of those being challenged and gone through, like up to Idaho Supreme Court level.
I know a couple around here.
To establish any kind of case law, 'cause it's fairly new, the, the Vacation Rental Terminal Code for the states, like two thousand eighteen or nineteen, so. I, I don't know the, like, case.
Third Street, uh, Third Street, um, the old, anyway, so there's a, uh, I think it's the pier, um, the old, uh, Deshaun, uh, mansion down there. I know that, I know that they took it to court and won.
Did they?
Yeah.
Was it a district court or a supreme?
I don't know, at that, I thought, I don't know.
I'll have to look.
Yeah, I'll find out about it.
Okay, be fine.
Yeah, I'll find it.
So that's what I was doing tonight, I was over there drafting up, making minor tweaks after a couple hours.
They can regulate, right? Like, that's what they can do.
Mm-hmm. So we, we established like parking standards and other things, right? But that's all staff decided.
Okay.
It's, it should be cut and dry, black and white decisions, so. That's, I think all the updates I have, they're still going pretty strong with the comp plan update, the planning commission. They're slowing down right now, getting a lot more input from outside agencies for the natural resources component, and that's a big one. And after that, they have utilities, services, utilities, something like.
Public services, utilities.
Yeah, public service, utilities and facilities, and that'll be a big update as well. Um, and then on to the land use component.
Jake, quick question, going back to the vacation rental. Now, what about an HOA?
So House Bill one sixty-six.
I've heard it's outlawed even for HOAs, but I don't know if that's true.
One sixty-six is, so accessory dwelling units and I think vacation rentals, um, HOAs can't enact or enforce specific provisions that prohibit.
Oh, yeah.
So there's other states that have gone the opposite direction right now.
Sure, I know it's way that way, which I like, for me, I think it's interesting.
It is a property right.
Yeah. It's crazy that even HOAs like, like, can't do it.
So I thought.
A lot of people don't know that.
Yeah, I thought ADUs would be a vested right in state code. House Bill one sixty-six, um, has some specific provisions under, I think it was Title Fifty-Five in state code, more or less you can't have a covenant or an HOA restrict accessory dwelling units. They had initially drafted something to add to sixty-five, six, sixty-five forty, like a new state code. They looked a lot like the vacation rental standards, but for ADUs, um, where you say you can't strictly prohibit them, so it's not a vested property right now, right now, but, and then that, that part had gotten removed before the House Bill got signed, but that is signed in the law. The state code just hasn't been updated, won't be until July, so. So now it's, it's illegal for HOAs and covenants to restrict them, but, um, not for cities and counties yet, so I, I don't know how that's gonna play out. I assume that ADUs will be a vested property right within the next couple of years, so we'll see what happens.
As it should be.
And then there was an update to ACI agreements, um, a House Bill that didn't make it all the way, um, they had worked on it and then it didn't get signed in yet, so I'm assuming they'll take that one up next year as well.
I just wanted to say there was the Hammond, uh, zone change that I think you guys heard a while ago.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so Hammond, um, got remanded, if you think back to like December, I think you guys took that up back in November.
Okay. And then it went to the commissioners?
Went to the commissioners who remanded it back to the planning department to, um, and to the applicant to apply for a comp plan map amendment, so they've done that. They requested more time and, uh, more or less pushed that hearing to June twelfth, is that right?
Yeah, fourteen.
Fourteen?
That's not coming back to us.
She's really good.
I'm paying him off, he's like, I'm doing multitasking.
That's not coming back to us, though, it's going back to the commissioner.
So, uh, just more or less the board hasn't made a final decision on it yet, so that'll be, hopefully that's the day that they'll make the final decision. They could continue it, so. But both the AM file and your, your recommendation for the ZC file will go before that day, so. Could be an interesting, we'll see how it goes, I don't know. It's, we've got a lot of comments on it, so. A lot of people stirred up.
See a lot of signs driving up.
Oh, yeah? Have they registered a domain name against it yet? That's happened before.
Yeah.
On a couple of files, so. Um, yeah, you'll see some interesting stuff throughout the summer, we're getting some files in that, um, may come to you guys or may just go to the hearing examiner, so. I think she'll be out for a little bit.
How's that determined? What goes to the examiner?
Yeah, the, the planning department right now, essentially, anything that can be decided by the hearing examiner goes to the hearing examiner. So any CUPs, variances, subdivisions go right to the hearing examiner, um, and then any zone changes or anything where the code says it has, like this renewal, it said it has to go back to the, essentially the hearing body that made the decision, which was a planning and zoning, which we don't have anymore, so.
Right, nearest thing.
It was more appropriate to come right to the zoning commission for it, so.
It's actually only the insurance condition.
Always, okay.
It's not in the code. So you're not gonna get a, get the request for every, uh, extension request.
I got you.
The problem was that it was written on the decision letter and that's why we had to.
I got you.
That's, that's.
Thank you. She's really good, she's smarter than I am.
Well, everybody is. Bam! They keep you in line.
Yeah. Um, I don't see or have heard of any other changes yet coming from the commissioner's office that they want us to make. Um, I think they're waiting for the comp plan to be up, you know, update to happen before we start looking at ordinance updates, so. I'm, we look at, we find little loopholes here or there and we try to draft ordinance to fill or fix or, um, anything coming from legal, we try to, we try to fix pretty quickly, um, but no major updates that I'm working on right now, so. That's about it.